That was my original suggestion to you, it was needed to be changed or applied.
Here I can share.
That's a discussion. I should have to come and put this check away because I don't want to redeem the taxes on this Duran Barzel. Thank you for the check.
And Amy, I have a couple of things for you to sign before I run over there in the morning. So, I don't know if you want to do them in the morning and have me run over, or?
I do. No, I didn't wait. I'll stick around.
Call this city council working meeting to order?
Augubright.
Here.
Kalman.
Here.
Current.
Here.
Udis.
Here.
Here. Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My name is Angie Parkerage and I booked the entertainment for Volbass Bar and I'm the one that sent the request for street closure. In years past, we've requested two to three street closures a year and this year I decided to request most of the dates with bans on the patio. The reason being is for the safety of the attendees since the location of the request has no other residential access. When we have these events on the patio, it can result in people watching from the curb and even in the street. So having the street closed gives the peace of mind, it is safe for attendees, and it also accommodates our desire for these to be family friendly. Which in our letter of request for street closure, it stated "family friendly." We have had only positive feedback from residents of Oglesby, entertainers, and other businesses. The feedback has also been complimentary to the city of Oglesby for allowing this. It was mentioned at the city council meeting about revenue for the establishment. I would like to say that these events are no charge to attend. Without a cover charge, these events do not guarantee a profit after paying all associated costs. We are not seeking road closure for revenue but safety and better accommodations to offer family-friendly live music events in Oglesby. Since the majority of our events are planned for the patio, I would only need the opportunity to use the street for four days. I would like to add that we all should be working together with the same goal, to support each other and see Oglesby prosper. I want to see our town growing and more importantly, I want everyone that lives here, works here, and visits. To see a town working together as one, it also makes the city look more appealing to business entrepreneurs to choose to establish in Oglesby. I know that everyone here is capable of that or you wouldn't be here right now. And I do have the dates if you want to know. June 4th, July 16th, August 4th, and October 1st. And I can send that in an email.
What were they again, one more time?
June 4th, July 16th, August 4th, and October 1st. And that is to accommodate some bigger shows that we do have planned.
Are you putting the same time request in there from 10:00 AM till 11:59 as well, or is that modified?
You know, realistically, like, 3 o'clock.
So are we modifying these to 3:00 PM from the 10:00 AM?
Yeah.
And just clarifying, I don't have my calendar out, but August 4th and October 1st are also Saturdays?
They're all Saturdays.
Okay.
You got a list of those dates?
Yeah, and I will send it in an email. I'm just running around last minute.
So you're saying four dates?
Yep.
And you're changing the time, is it 3 till 11:59, or you didn't mean 10:00 AM to 3 is what you meant, I assume?
No, 3 till, like, right before midnight.
3 to midnight.
As soon as the band's done. I mean, usually, we're, they only play, some of them play 6 to 9, some are 7 to 10. And we're usually done by 11:00. Cleaned up, street open. But I just put that in there for extra.
Okay. Thank you, Angie. Is there any other public, any other comments?
My name is Lisa Kiriko and there is a few things that I would like to talk to, talk about that's on the agenda tonight. Number seven, it is the future plans of the rising lot. There's been a lot of talk regarding a parking lot on that side of town. Everyone knows that the parking is very bad down there. We now have two more businesses coming to that block. We have rented out a space in our building and we also know that where Gary's TV is, they're remodeling it, getting ready to rent it out also. So that's going to be less space than there already has been. So, in the past, we've been talking about that becoming a parking lot and then on March 28th, Mr. Revara, the mayor, wants to give someone 90 days if they wanted to purchase it, to put a business on the lot. Now it's back on the agenda and it's 42 days later and you're going to list it. I'm just kind of curious, you know, I mean, the time's half up, if I'm understanding it correctly. The next thing, and I don't know if this would fall under number 12, it says the gaming license and liquor license. We could go with the gaming machines first. On 4/4 at the regular meeting, you guys are going to discuss if the fees were going to be different. The attorney stated that there was a state statute that you can't make the fees different. However, there are municipalities in Illinois that charge a different fee for nonprofit businesses up to six machines and then someone that has six to 10. You could probably talk to any VGT operator that knows about the different fees because I talked to mine, I think there are different fees throughout the state. So if it's a state statute, I don't understand why some municipalities can do it and some can't.
Lisa, do you know what cities those are?
I did not write them down, but I have looked through and I have seen that there are other cities. If you look it up, you could probably just, or call your local VGT operator, somebody that knows more about that, there are different prices, so.
It's, I don't know if these cities are home-ruled or not. It's my understanding, even talking from the people that you lease the machines from, that we could not do the same. But I'll check it.
Okay.
Check into it.
Yeah, I mean, because...
It's a fair question.
Even, you know, nonprofits, they're less than the regular establishments, but the larger companies are more. So, I mean, I don't understand how they're doing it and we can't.
Well, Pat, isn't it true that home rule can supersede state statute?
Yeah, they have completely, they have completely different rules. So of some of those towns you're referring to, our home rules, they might be able to do it. But when I checked the state statute as it applied to Oglesby situation, there was no way you could discriminate amongst fee schedules. It had to be the same across the board.
Okay, okay. So, and then I don't understand when this was voted on. It kept being tabled, tabled, they wanted to talk about it when a full board was here and then when it came down to it, it was just discussed what was going to happen and nobody, I didn't see a vote or anything on it.
I don't think it has been voted on.
Oh.
I don't think the council's made a decision yet on...
Correct.
Exactly what they want to do.
So that was, when you read the ordinance, it was just a suggestion?
I don't remember reading the ordinance. There was an ordinance I...
Where, there was some discussion?
On 4/16, when you deviated it, you said, "I'm deviating from the agenda." On the two ordinances, one was the gaming and you read that it would have an increase in the next three years, but it would end up being $250.
It hasn't been drafted as an ordinance yet.
Okay, okay. Because when you read it off, okay, that's where the confusion came in. All right. The other thing was the adult use.
Again, please.
The adult use ordinance?
Okay.
I don't know if that would fall under number 12. At first we were, I mean, I was told that we wouldn't fall under the cabaret, that there was no, nothing violated. It was tabled and then at the end they came back and said that we were under the cabaret, which it's not frequent entertainment. I don't know what frequent would mean, but I just want to say I don't see the harm in adult entertainment. It's not frequent. How can we pick and choose what we want to follow? Ordinance includes a lot of items that I think need to be addressed, dressing as the opposite sex, and also impersonators. And didn't, I mean, does that mean an Elvis impersonator could not come into the bar? I mean, I think they've been at the Fun Fest before. I mean, all that stuff, I don't see the harm. We had no trouble, no, you know, we didn't have the police called, we didn't have, nothing was there. I don't see the issue with the adult entertainment. I really don't. I think that it would be nice to see the city working with us instead of always against us. And I'm going to say, I feel as if personally, it's always, you guys are working against us. Angie and I had come in over a year and a half ago, giving ideas of what we could do throughout the town. One, as an example, is a car show. That was, we were told that the street could not be closed down. Now the city's having a car show, or they're advertising to have a car show. And I want to know, instead of working with small businesses, is it better for you to get special permit license to do things like this and take away from the building and mortar, buildings, I mean, the businesses that are here? We're here to stay. And where does all the funds that you make off that, the revenue, go? You're taking away from businesses. So keep taking and taking, but never, never offering anything. We, we've discussed about putting events on city pages, doing events on the Facebook, on the marquee, in the monthly calendar. We were told, because we're not for profit, that we could not do that. Although, on the 13th of April, there was a business listed there. They were reopening in Oglesby. I was glad to see it. But I mean, is this another thing, we're going to keep picking and choosing? What we're going to, who we're going to do stuff for and who we're not? I don't think that's right. I've spoken to other business association presidents in surrounding towns. The city works with them, not against them, because by working with the businesses, we all could prosper. And I really think you guys need to take a look at that.
Well, I can address the car show issue, if I may. That came about when I attended a Cabo meeting and Angie was there and we all discussed it together. I was there, Erin Quick was there, the mayor was there. I believe it was Angie's idea, she was going to take the lead on it and we said, "Great, let's throw a food truck festival in too, since the street will be closed." So it was their idea. And we kept the ball rolling around with the food truck festival. And then we started talking about, you know, the car show, she was going to look into her contacts to book it. Angie, if I'm not saying it right, please correct me. Excuse me. And at some point, I think Angie stepped back from Cabo for whatever reason, I don't know if it was attendance, I'm not going to speak about that. So we decided, let's at least keep the ball rolling with that. We've already booked food trucks, we're still trying to get people lined up for the car show. So we didn't take anybody's idea and run with it. We took it with Cabo when we attended the meeting and said, "If you're going to do that, let us help and we'll do this. We can offer this to go with it. We can set up the food truck festival in the park lot," since she was going to look into getting a car show booked downtown. That's how that came about.
Well, I mean, that was just one example, because we had a whole list.
But that was one that I was at a meeting and I can tell you how it went. And I think that was a great idea and said, "We'll help, let us help do that."
Okay.
Well, eventually, I said that I felt, because Cabo had such low attendance, that I couldn't take that on myself. And I asked the city what they were willing to do to help. And I, you, and correct me if I'm wrong, you have financial reasons, community workers, and having a kingdom, that you guys couldn't commit to that. But then, a few days later, there was a Facebook post that the city's going to do a car show. And when I emailed you about it, you said, "Well, you guys are going to bring in food trucks and stuff the same day if Cabo could make it happen." But I made it clear at the meeting that I did not feel, I could take that on myself. I still don't feel that way. But I love that the city has since shown interest and even planning. But I just want to make that clear, that when we left that Cabo meeting, I did not get supported by the city in regards to actually having a car show. It was left up to me to speak out if I can close the street down and Dollar General. And I know that another business inquired about closing the street for a car show and they were declined, so then it kind of got me into, you know, put me in a bad place. So I just want to make that clear. But I think what Lisa's trying to say is, we actually are all wanting to work together. The bars have been having meetings since September. But then, we get like two different answers, you know, it kind of depends on the situation and what the event may be. And if the city can't have more events, like, you do have businesses that are showing interest and we're not giving up either. I mean, these aren't moneymakers by, like, any means, but we're doing it for the city, truly. I mean, just getting people into town, like, we're so close to Utica and Star Rock and we're trying to help. So we just need to be like a better communication level, we suggested more meetings, you know, we suggested that a year and a half ago when we came in to talk about events and, you know, the city being more forthcoming about one of their events here. So.
I guess I don't understand the problem with this example. So from what I understand is, the city is sponsoring a food truck vendor event downtown and a car show together. So it sounds like it's a big event that the city is sponsoring. I guess I'm not understanding what the conflict here is.
Well, if the city is doing that, there is no conflict other than we, we ask for that kind of help and support, you know, we would take on a part of that, you know, planning and organizing and advertising, like, to help, you know? So.
So I'm wondering if there's two things that are being mixed here that might be part of the problem. I mean, I don't know, I can't speak to the rest of the council, but I think we're all for, if businesses want to do events downtown, or they want to do something at Seneca Square or something, every time we have a small event, that brings more economic opportunity and people walk around, it's always fantastic. I'm wondering if what you're talking about might be the policy that we have to where the city's Facebook page can't really be using its audience to sponsor or promote something that, that could bring profit for a specific business. I think the policy that we approved, it says nonprofits and, and things like that. I think that, is that what you're talking about?
In, in the one example, yes. When there is a business posted on there that is not a non-for-profit, which I was glad to see it. But yet, you think about, when we had came in and talked to them about doing stuff like that, we were told we couldn't.
As in, as in what specifically?
That we couldn't advertise anything.
For a specific business? Yeah, because that's against our policy that we have. We can't, we can't do that. But we have done things where, like the zombie crawl, because it's, because it's all the businesses. It's all, that way you're not giving preferential treatment to one business over the other.
Okay. Well, you can look on April 13th, there's a business advertised that they were reopening. And like I said, I thought it was an awesome thing, but there again, it's another, oh, we had asked about that, told no, and now we see it happening.
I, I don't know what the specific April, was it, I'm just guessing, was it like a reshare of like the Chamber of Commerce promoting something, like an opening, like a ribbon cutting or something like that?
A reopening.
I, I don't know the specifics.
Well, apparently, Lisa, we've got a problem with communications. Either we're not listening or you're not listening. And we can correct that. We want you to be profitable and we have tried to work to, you know, to find middle ground where we disagree. There may be some things that, that we won't agree on, but, but our goal is to make the businesses profitable. And I think the, the city has taken some steps, especially with the, with the gaming, with the plan that I think we're going to come up with and move on. You know, I understand what you're saying about parking that in the town. But also, this is, this is a council decision, it isn't Dom Revara's sole decision.
And the car show is just an example. We had a list of a lot of things that we wanted, you know, to do or present and, I mean, it really...
You know, one of the problems that we do have is that we can't totally shut down Walnut Street. Or if we do, we've got to get creative because we've got Dollar General. And, and we get flack from them every time we try to do something. You know, we can come in through the, through the alley in the back and, and try to get creative, but we'll work with you. We'll meet you halfway.
Well, I mean, if, if we're helping each other, that's how we're going to prosper. Not by keeping, going back and forth.
That's, you're correct.
And I think, you know, that's all I have.
Okay. Jury had your hand up, you wanted to say something?
Yeah. What you said about Facebook, who advertises for their businesses all the time? If you look at their page, there's businesses out there all the time where if somebody's got a special, they've got it on Facebook, crew on their Facebook. And this group here always says, "Well, you know, they're doing it in LaSalle, they're doing it in Oglesby," or, you know, "crew, they're doing it in Spring Valley." It's like, tonight you're going to talk about raising up the fees for the gambling machines. LaSalle has decided to double, so they're going to go from 40 to like 8, whatever it is. They're not going to go the whole 250 like you guys want to do. Because I, I heard the meeting, I didn't come, but I heard the meeting, yeah, we can do it if we want. No, you can't.
I think we'll move on. Number five. Place on file 1194-051622.
No, Dom, wrong one, wrong one. We're actually adopting it. I think you might have the old agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I do. We're adopting ordinance 1194050922. Ordinance abating the taxes heretofore levied for the year 2021 payable in the year 2022 to pay debt services on general obligations refunding bonds, alternate revenue sources, Series 2020A for the city of Oglesby, LaSalle County, Illinois.
And so I'll explain this, Dom, if you want.
Please.
Amy's office received a call from the county clerk's office last week, wanting to know whether the city wanted to abate the two tax levies that were in place for number five and number six. These were tax levies that were placed in service in 2020 and in 2013 with regard to number six, that were placed in place when you adopted bond ordinances, authorizing the issuance of bonds to obtain money for the city. And those ordinances required that you levy every year coming up until that bond is paid off. Again, number six was done in 2013, number five was done in 2020. And the city would routinely, I guess, in prior years, abate those tax levies from those bond ordinances. But they did not do so in the fall of last year or early this, earlier this year. And in talking to Amy about it and in doing some research on these, it became clear that you've always abated them in the past. And to avoid a huge increase to the taxpayers of Oglesby, we assume you're going to want to abate those taxes. And my only concern in talking to Amy was that you have to have enough funds in place to make the payments on these bonds. But the ordinances themselves require the user fees be set aside for the payment of the bond, so I'm assuming, assuming all that's being done. And you have the monies available to do that. So unless you have further questions, assuming you do want to abate these, so as not to put that extra burden on the taxpayers, I would suggest you adopt number five and number six in order to abate those levies. And I'm going to run them over to the clerk's office tomorrow because they're ready to extend the taxes and they would like to see these abatement ordinances in place.
So I remember doing this in the past.
Yeah, you apparently have every year.
Did we miss, did we miss, so we missed last year's or something, or?
Yeah. Nobody brought to my attention that you had ordinances, that there are levies that needed to be abated. And we did your levy ordinance, the auditors didn't say anything to me about it either. But, you know, it looks like you need to abate them if you don't want to put this burden on the taxpayers. And you have every year.
So this is fall every year?
Do we need to drop, adapt these individually?
Yes.
And so this is something that we should be doing every, fall every year? Is that what it was?
Yes. Actually, one of these is the final levy in place for, for that bond issue. So we'll probably only have to do one next year unless you adopt another bond ordinance between now and then. So only one of these will be in place and it's certainly on my radar.
Okay. So I need a motion.
I'll make the motion, I can't remember that off the top of my head though. I will make a motion to adopt ordinance 1194050922. Ordinance abating the tax heretofore levied for the year 2021 payable in the year 2022 to pay debt service on general obligation refunding bonds, alternate revenue source, Series 2020A for the city of Oglesby, LaSalle County, Illinois.
Second.
Augubright?
Aye.
Kalman?
Aye.
Current?
Aye.
Udis?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye. Next is to adopt ordinance 1195-050922. Ordinance abating the taxes heretofore levied for the year 2021 payable in the year 2022 to pay debt service on the general obligation refunding bonds, alternate revenue sources, Series 2013 for the city of Oglesby, LaSalle County, Illinois.
I will make a motion to adopt ordinance 1195050922. Ordinance abating the taxes heretofore levied for the year 2021 payable in the year 2022 to pay debt service on general obligation refunding bonds, alternate revenue source, Series 2013 for the city of Oglesby, LaSalle County, Illinois.
Second.
Augubright?
Aye.
Kalman?
Aye.
Udis?
Aye.
Revara?
Aye. Next, discuss authorizing the listing of property located at 246 East Walnut Street, Illinois for the sale as a B1 downtown commercial property. That's the Reisner property. Discussion?
I mean, I think we'll, we might end up making a parking lot out of it though, but I just don't, I'd hate to give up the opportunity if a business did want to come in and create something down there, to give up that opportunity.
Have we gotten any interest? Not saying, I kind of understand how this thing works and I don't want to build a building downtown Oglesby currently. Price-wise compared to what I'll get out of it would be insanity. So, has anyone showed any interest, is my question? Anyone?
Not at all.
Okay.
Are you saying we should skip that? You think we should skip that opportunity and just go straight to the?
Well, it's been out there. It's a phone call away. I don't know if a Realtor will really change the game or anything like that, to tell you the truth.
And there's an email in your packet that I sent to Amy on April 22nd that shows you the two options you have available to try and sell that property.
Okay.
You don't necessarily have to get a Realtor involved, but...
And we don't have to accept any bids.
Right. The, the first option requires that you prepare an ordinance directing the sale of the property and then we have to publish a notice once a week for three successive weeks, soliciting bids for the purchase of the property. We have to specify the meeting at which the bids will be opened. Um, we have to specify the meeting at which the bids will be opened, it has to be at least thirty days after the first publication. And the, the council can decide if they wanna accept or reject all those bids. Three fourths of the council would have to vote to, uh, approve of a sale to any given winning bidder. Um, the second option allows you to authorize the sale of the property simply by resolution. That option requires an appraisal of the property, um, the appraisal must be available for public inspection. Uh, the sale under that option can be conducted by the, the staff of the city, a real estate agent, public auction. Um, you must get at least eighty percent of the appraised value of the property, and two thirds of the council has to vote to approve that sale. So you can either direct it by ordinance, publish and seek bids, or you can direct it by resolution, do an appraisal, share the appraisal, and see what comes out of it.
So we don't have the option to sell it for a severely reduced amount if somebody came in with an agreement saying that they were gonna put X business here within six months or something like that?
Well, under the first option, you can sell it for anything you want, as long as three fourths of the council agree. Under the second option, you have to get at least eighty percent of the appraised value.
Now, if we rejected all of the bids that were to come in under number one, would that revert back to city property then if we wanted to put a parking lot there, how would that work?
It would just remain city property. It is city property already, Terry.
Okay, gotcha.
So when it says sealed bid, the only thing that's interesting about that is what if somebody's bid comes in better than somebody else, like lower, but yet we wanted to... Let, let's just say, for example, somebody wants to buy it for five dollars and do nothing with it. But somebody else wants to come in for three dollars, but they're gonna put like a Bassfitter Pro Shop or something crazy. Are we not allowed to give them, to them? Because, because we have to give it the higher...
Under the first option, you can, Jason.
Well, because usually, when we deal with sealed bids, you have to give it to the, the lowest bidder, or in this case, selling would be the highest bidder.
You know, you're not required, as you see here, or any other bid determined to be in the best interest of the municipality by three fourths vote of the council. So you can make any decision you want under the first option. The second one, you're tied to eighty percent of the appraised price.
Well, in that case, I think we should do option one, put a, a time limit on it, whatever it is, I know we've already kinda eaten up some of the ninety days or whatever. And if something comes in really great that they could do, we do it, great, if not, we reject everything else and just go with the parking lot idea.
I don't know who reads News Tribune lately, but we'll see. That's, I think if anyone locally especially was interested, they were very, came forward and said something. But it's council vote, so.
Well, before we can vote, I need a motion and second.
Well, what do people think? I, I'm for option one, I guess, because it gives us an option. I mean, i- if we say another forty-five days for that, I mean, what are, what are we out in that case? We're out forty-five days from starting plans for a parking lot.
What's it gonna cost us to put a parking lot in there? Any idea ballpark?
Forty to fifty thousand, I would think.
Do we have those funds available now, Tommy?
We use our TIF funds.
If we don't do anything, we retain ownership of that property, we can act however we want to with the right path.
I think it's at least, because it's sitting there vacant anyways, I think it's worth a period of time to see if something great could come in and... I mean, like, like Tommy said, it more likely might not, but I hate to give up the opportunity for something, if we go officially with a realtor to come into...
Honestly, guys, the only problem I see with the first option are the publication costs, because they're not gonna be cheap, you know? I just did one today for another municipality in a different county, actually. Um, their newspaper's gonna be much cheaper, but I bet it's still gonna cost five, six hundred dollars to publish those three publications in that paper. I would think yours is probably gonna be more like seven or eight hundred dollars, and that's just a guess, but you have to publish once a week for three successive weeks. There won't be an appraisal fee under the first option, Lisa.
Which would probably be seven.
Yeah, the appraisal fee under the second option would probably be more like fifteen hundred bucks, just to let you know. Because Amy and I just paid one for the property you got at the sewage treatment plant, and it was about fifteen hundred bucks. So if you wanna make a decision, we would need a motion to select option one or option two. And then if you selected option one, I would bring an ordinance back, probably to next Monday's meeting, authorizing the sale, then I could prepare the notice, start the publications. And we would pick a meeting date out, at least thirty days, and say, "You gotta have your sealed bids in by this date," and then you guys will open them around the table, and we'll decide if you want to. You don't have to make a decision that night, you can open the bids and sleep on it and talk about it and decide what you wanna do. Particularly if you get several competing bids with different interests in the property, but, um, we will open them on that date, uh, which is what the statute would require. If you'd, if you select option one. If you select option two, we'll order the appraisal and get that in and then start that process.
I think six hundred bucks and forty-five days wait is, is worth to see if something fantastic from out of the area would wanna come in and get it.
But there's also option three, which is do nothing and put it in a parking lot.
Yeah, but, but even option one, if nothing comes in, or, you know, we, we wasted forty-five days, or we spend the six hundred bucks, and then we can still go to option two.
Six hundred dollars probably per posting, Jason, I would imagine, right?
Well, no, I, I, I don't think it'll be six hundred per posting, but I think it might be two or three hundred per posting.
Okay.
It's not a terribly long notice.
Because it's a great lot too, it's a corner lot. It's not a corner lot?
No, I didn't think it was.
Okay.
It's a drive-through lot.
Okay, that's what I'm thinking.
I know we need parking down that avenue.
I think you can tell which way I'm leaning.
I can tell.
Yeah.
Yep.
My only issue with that is we stated about a year, year and a half ago, that we needed parking so bad that we bought a home to extend the city's parking lot, le- paid, leveled it, removed it, and there's still no parking lot there, so...
Isn't that because we're gonna put charging stations in? I thought that's why we were waiting the whole time. I thought we were putting an infrastructure in for charging stations there, it was the reason we were waiting.
There's a, there's a...
Is that not happening?
Well, if you wait a little bit later tonight, or in this meeting, I'll tell you where we are with charging stations.
But I don't know if it was specifically for that area though, I mean, it could've been the current one.
If I don't have a motion and second, I'll move on.
For, which one are we gonna motion here, number three?
Well, you don't have to do anything if you want, number three.
Don't have to do anything.
You don't have to do anything.
Well, so we don't have to do anything if we want, wanna go that route.
Correct, if you just wanna retain the property and, you know, possibly use it for a parking lot in the future, you don't have to do anything. And you can always change your mind in the future, if you get bids in the parking lot and it's too expensive or something, you know, you can decide then.
And we could always have somebody come in tomorrow and say they wanna do something with it. We could work.
It's true.
You have any idea about the estimated cost, Jim, since you're here? Got an idea? Okay. About forty thousand, Tom, you're on the money.
That's on the money of that anyway. I, I wouldn't wanna do that, and I'll tell you why, I'm not sure that some of that, that when that building was down, that it was done properly.
Plus, I don't know if I'd wanna have a gravel parking lot in the middle of our downtown district that we're trying to build up.
I hate to have a car fall into. Okay, let's go to number eight, discuss purchase of a vehicle for the Oglesby Police Department to place on file and to approve at the May sixteenth meeting.
Okay. I'll expand on that a little bit, you'll see in your packets that we have a government bid for a squad car. Um, price is thirty-five, nine eighty-five. And I believe we have seventy-five thousand dollars appropriated for the purchase of a squad car within their budget right now. So, um, there would be that cost, and then also the light package would be about six thousand dollars just under, and that comes out of a different light item on their appropriations. So...
Can we use any of the two, I wanna call them slush funds, drug fund and wherever the other fund is for this?
Well, I, I, I think he's been pretty generous in the past with providing a lot of vehicles out of that fund. He's funding three officers for three years, the way I understand, is that correct, chief? You're, you're using that, that money laundering fun, one officer for three years, um, also out of that.
Did we buy one vehicle out of that already this year, this last year, or is that more than a year ago?
We didn't have anything out of it last year, I know that for a fact.
Must've been over a year ago then.
And of course, just to remind you all, we just started a new fiscal year, May first, so your old appropriation ordinance is gone, and you'll be putting a new one in place in the first quarter of this year.
If we keep the line, I'd be saying, it would be seventy-five thousand if we, if we mirror it off of last year's. Any discussion?
Once, it's been over a year since we bought a police car. I feel like we bought three of them.
I thought we bought, I thought we bought two within the last year, and I thought one of them was with the drug funds and the other was with, uh, general funds, that's what I thought.
Chief, wanna speak up on that?
The drug fund, or whatever.
Super funds.
It's a weird way to say that, by the way.
Yeah. Are we replacing one, or are we just adding to the fleet? Okay.
I think what's happening, Tommy, is they have, with that school resource officer, has taken down a vehicle.
Okay.
By putting somebody out there, we want her to be able to respond if there's an emergency within the city.
Okay.
So I think that's where it's gonna be realized.
Okay.
What is the, I know for like dump trucks, we're looking at twenty years, what, what is the expected life of a cruiser? Three, four, five, six?
What are you getting out of him, chief, probably six, seven years, at the most?
Feel like, yeah.
So six years, every one should be turned over essentially, and what have we got, a fleet of ten?
What do you have total, chief, for, for vehicles? What do you have total for vehicles right now, how many?
Five? We bought three or four within the last year?
He's got a, he's got a newer fleet.
Yeah, I remember that. My only concern is, if you only have five vehicles and we're getting four new ones within a year frame, you know, we're not, our lifecycle is not being averaged out very well. That's my, I'm not concerned about the cost of it, that's my only concern is that our lifecycle of fleet is being replaced regularly.
Well, I, I, I think my take on that is, he's being very generous with that money laundering fund, with purchasing those vehicles. Instead of the city having to incur that cost, because he has complete control over the way that money's spent. So he could be using it for other things, he's actually helping pay for an officer, and he's been buying a bunch of squad cars as well, so. I'd like to see us out of the city budget where we have it appropriated, to at least get him one every once in a while out of the city budget. And to me, that, that's our responsibility is when we're adding to his fleet with what we're paying, and I can't manage how he spends that money out of that laundering fund, that's at his discretion, so.
And the college is paying us a monthly fee for a car too, I'm okay with it.
I don't have an issue, so it sounds to me like we al- almost need to get one per year anyways, to, to rotate there. My, my only concern is if we got three or four within the last year or so, that's my only concern.
I get, I get.
That we're, we're giving a headache to administration plus one from now, that they're gonna have four or five vehicles they need to get in the same timeframe.
It's kinda like the same discussion we had about the ambulances, you know, we have two that are right next to each other instead of being on a program where every seven years, we're, we're switching them out.
And I don't know how much they, three or four years before that, how many cars they've bought before, I think there was, there was an older fleet.
Yeah, I remember hearing years of stuff, and you're like, whoa, that's an old one.
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
Well, I will make a motion that we put on file, um, the purchase of a squad car, the cost of thirty-five thousand dollars, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars, uh, out of this upcoming year's budget.
Plus the six thousand, Terry?
That's gonna be out of, out of a different light item.
Okay.
Um, Pat, so I don't know, do we need to?
No.
I don't, okay.
I don't think you do, if it's out of a different line item.
I'll second that, pending us, by next meeting, probably just getting a, a good idea of exactly what vehicles we have in the years of their age, because that's my only concern. But I'll second the motion placed on file.
I'll get that information for you. Well, I, I told you that's the process, chief, that I had to place it on file, and there's no, there's no way I can get around that. It has to be on file for, for a week.
If there's an emergency, there's something we can do.
Well, can't we just pay them back?
That's what I was, that, that, that's kinda what I thought.
I'm being frowned upon. Can we pay the fund back? I'm not an accountant, so who am I looking for?
I'm not understanding where this money's coming from, uh, some kind of a drug fund, chief?
Actually, so what happens is when TRID makes a seizure, and they send that money to the state, and the state says, "Here's how much you get back," whether it's drug money or whether it's money laundering. The big sum that we receive was from money laundering. So what happens is nine agencies in TRID, it's divided many ways, so...
So thi- this is money you control, chief, how it's spent? Well, then I think you can go ahead and spend the money and buy the car, and the city can authorize it at the next meeting, because it's your money to spend any way you want to. It's only if the council's spending the money that they have to go through the procedure. Oh, yeah.
So trying to buy this squad car has been extremely difficult. We have a friend in Southern Illinois that has a dealership. I called him, and he said, "I'll save you a vehicle, but I can't save it past a week because I have so many people calling every single day, I gotta deal with credit." I said, "Well, they got a meeting Monday night."
There, there's ways, aren't there ways that we can make votes for super majority if there's an emergent, like we have to get a purchase right away?
Yeah, I don't know that you can do that to get over a contract, huh, though, Jason, I, I don't know off the top of my head, but, you know.
We reimburse them.
I don't know that this is necessarily an emergency, but...
If I'm understanding it right, the chief is gonna buy it, we're gonna reimburse it.
If that's a law is legal.
Yeah, you can take that up at the next meeting. We'll have Amy put it on the agenda, the chief can go ahead with the purchase.
Okay.
You guys are in agreement that he can purchase this vehicle?
I'm in agreement with that.
Jim, you okay with it? Go ahead, chief, we'll approve it all next Monday.
We need mo- we need a...
Well, it's on file right now, right?
Just to put it on file now.
I'll make a motion, we put it on file, I think I was doing, I don't think I got a second though.
Second?
Okay, that's right.
I gave you an ultimatum, but he did.
We didn't take a roll call, that's what...
I said, "Bring your papers," and I'll second it.
So, Augur Bright?
Aye.
Colin?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Eunice?
Aye.
Discuss options for administrative assistant within the Oglesby Police Department.
The chief has approached me about the need for him to have an administrative assistant. You'll see in your packet that he's come up with some of the duties that he'd like this person to, um, complete. I'll go over a few of them here, assist with grant applications, websites assistance, um, scheduling, emails, FOIAs, all kinds of, of different things. I did some math, he, chief is looking for anywhere from ten to fifteen hours a week. If we went, uh, ten hours a week at fifteen dollars an hour, you'd be looking at seven thousand eight hundred hours annually gross. If you went with fifteen, that's ten hours per week, we went fifteen hours a week at fifteen dollars an hour, you'd be looking at eleven thousand seven hundred dollars, um, annually gross income. So I just wanted to bring that up for discussion and see if anybody has any thoughts, I'm sure the chief can answer any questions you might have as far as why the need exists.
Um, I don't know how much detail we wanna go into here, but I mean, I, I do have some questions, um, I guess you can stop me anytime. Uh, my understanding was, since we moved a, a part-time person over to full-time in the clerk's office, that somebody was going down there to assist with some of these things, is that not happening anymore?
That's not happening.
Okay. Um, the only other thing that I think about is, um, you know, with the creation of IVRD, the, the telecommunicator job that we have at Oglesby, we've maintained that. But they, my understanding is there's very little dispatching that happens there, but we have somebody that's a full-time dispatcher. I don't know if we take a look at the things that's been changed with, uh, um, the unfunded mandate for like the police body camera footage and all that stuff that's gotta get done. I don't know if we need to modify that position to be something that's more in fitting of what Oglesby needs, that's what I'm wondering.
Well, I, I, I think our hurdle is that that's a union position, and back when it was, um, negotiated... Well, I, I, I think our hurdle is that that's a union position, and back when it was, um, negotiated, it was strictly for a telecommunicator. So, now all the language that describes her, um, job description is gonna be in relation to telecommunications. Um, could we do an MOU and try to bargain over getting additional duties added? We could, would that take a long time if she wasn't up to the task, which I don't believe she is? So, we could be spinning our wheels for a couple of years too, and I don't think she has a lot of time left, I'm not sure on that, but I, I don't think we're looking at a twenty-year, another twenty years here. We're probably looking at, you know, a few at that, I, I would guess.
What is our deadline on the unfunded mandate for the cameras to be in place and all that stuff?
Twenty twenty-five, is that right? Twenty twenty, and that's gonna add a huge, um, FOIA blow to us as it, as it comes in redaction.
Because I think we just negotiated our contract, so it's, it's probably the year of twenty twenty-five, I think is the next contract negotiation for, for it, on top of it, so. A little hard to be chasing your tail at the end there, but I, I really think that's the long-term solution for this, is.
I agree with you a hundred percent, I, my, um, goal for this, or, or outlook, is that through attrition, when that position opens up. I think we need to totally rewrite what that person does, and add in a lot of responsibilities that aren't in there now.
So, are you suggesting that maybe we hire a part-time person in the meantime, and then as that contract comes back up, we would renegotiate that to be something completely different, and then?
Yes, that, that, that is my goal, and that, that's what I'd like to see done, and I think that makes the most sense. That being said, I wouldn't get, get to the point with these body cameras with all this redaction that has to take place, that, that one person can't do it. That's, that's a possibility too, and we'll cross that bridge when we come to it.
I have a feeling there's gonna be a third party that does that.
And I hope so too.
Hopefully, there's somebody smarter to do that out there.
I hope so, because I know, like, at the county, our IT department right now is doing it. So, and it's a lot of work.
Kinda move on and.
So, I'm hours, I don't have that form in front, that's my other question.
We're looking at anywhere from ten to fifteen hours per week, this would be a part-time, non-union position. So, again, doing the math, at, at ten hours a week, you'd be looking at five hundred and twenty hours annually, fifteen hours a week, seven hundred and eighty hours annually. I did the math on a thirteen dollar per hour salary and a fifteen dollar per hour salary. Um, going the ten hours per week, you'd be looking at six thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars at thirteen dollars an hour, seven thousand eight hundred at fifteen dollars an hour. Going the fifteen-hour week, which would be seven eighty, at thirteen dollars an hour, ten thousand one hundred and forty, and at fifteen dollars an hour, eleven thousand seven hundred dollars annually.
But that's based on ten hours a week now, before the FOIA request and all that stuff for body cam stuff even starts, though, right?
That's correct.
So, any idea what your estimation, but if, if we don't get, like Tommy says, there, a, a third party that does that or something like that, is that a one-time full-person job, or is that gonna be a multiple?
I, I don't think that, I don't think what chief wants out of this position is gonna probably be capable of handling all that. But if we had that position within the, the dispatch room that could assist with these duties, I think we certainly have to see how that plays out. And maybe between the two of them, if we had that much need, they could share that responsibility.
But there's other things that, that she can be assigned to, to make her a productive employee.
Oh, this isn't just for FOIA, right now, this list you have in front of you, that's a page long, is, is the duties he wants her to do. It, it's, it's very much an administrative assistant with all kinds of secretarial duties, and I, I think the, the FOIA stuff is gonna be down the road, you know, in twenty twenty-five. And I don't think we're gonna know the impact until we, we get the officers outfitted with them. I do know chief would like to maybe do a soft open on that, if you will, with maybe getting a couple officers outfitted with the cameras to kinda ease us into it, to see how it's gonna work out. That's a discussion for another meeting. Thoughts on this, you guys want a, a meeting to just kinda digest it and see which direction you wanna go?
Let us, let us digest it, but I, if you're gonna get somebody, uh, you'd be lucky if you get them for fifteen.
Yeah, that's.
I mean, you need the help, you need the help, I mean.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm more concerned about the, the long-term solution of what we're gonna let.
I definitely wanna go that direction, Jason, and that's, that's one hundred percent where I wanna go with that.
I mean.
It's just right now, I just don't think we're gonna get there, to be honest with you, I just.
With the union contract.
Exactly.
I mean, I mean, you gotta do what you have to do to, to get where you need to get, but as, as long as we have a plan in place that's gonna get us to the long-term goal.
And, and ideally, Jason, I mean, let's say we don't have the impact we thought we would on the cameras. I think this position could be, you know, resolve, or, but, uh, dissolved, and go with just that person in the dispatch center to do all the secretarial work as well. I mean, that's a possibility too, so this might only be a, like, you know, maybe a two-year position or three-year position. I know that doesn't help retain the employee, but, or they go full, or that person goes full-time, yeah.
Or maybe find the right person, and they go to a full-time benefit thing, maybe, yeah.
Right. That's all I have here.
Good enough. Next on the agenda is discuss requests for street closures within the city of Oglesby, there's four dates. Angie, I didn't get all the dates, you had June fourth.
July sixteenth, August fourth, and October first.
I do have some amplifying information to give, I, I stated something last meeting that was slightly incorrect. I, I stated that there's a cost associated with the city. My understanding from that was that our guys were, were putting the barricades up, because the, the first one that did happen in twenty nineteen, the, the back of the stage was a little into the, uh, into the street. So, I had them, I said, hey, I wanna make sure that doesn't ever happen again, so I, it was my understanding that they were doing, and they're coming in for overtime to do that. We had one employee that was doing it kind of on his off time, so these bring in the, uh, they're, they're bringing the, uh, the barricades ahead of time, like was stated from the, the crowd. But then they're coming on their off time to make sure that, that it's set up correctly, and I, I said, as long as it works like that, that's fine, but the moment there's another issue, then we'll have to go to something different. Because the other option was to bring cement barricades down, which would take a lot more equipment, more personnel, all kinds of things like that. So, so what I stated last week was incorrect, there, right now, there is not an extra cost to the city of setting up equipment and barricades.
The only issue I would have with this whole thing is, are there any objections from other business owners here about these dates? I, I just don't want there to be conflict with something happening between two bars, I don't think we're a big enough city to have two huge shows going on on, on one weekend, so. That's, that's my only concern, if nobody's speaking up on that, personally, I'm for it.
So, I think they're great, I've gone to, I've gone to all three that, that we've had in the past, we've only had one. I didn't understand the one thing, I think there was a comment that somebody said that a request of, of two to three were every year, I've never seen that. As far as I've seen, there's only been the one that's been requested, um, but we've approved one each per year, and I have not gotten ever a single complaint from a resident or a business. Now, is that because it's only once per year? I don't know, but I, I think there's value in having it at least once a year, I thought eight was a bit excessive. I don't know what the right number is, is four okay, is three okay, is two okay, I don't know, but one's never been an issue.
Why don't we give it a shot? What I don't want is any complaints from any of the other bar owners, that somebody's getting favored treatment. But, uh, if we don't have a problem, I would entertain a motion and second that we approve it.
I'll make that motion, Mayor, that we approve the four dates for Bulldogs to have the street closure.
Second.
Do we wanna list off those dates, just so, cause we don't have a document that says it, we just had it kinda pending.
Okay, so it's, it's gonna be Saturday, June fourth, three PM to eleven fifty-nine PM, um, July sixteenth, same times, Saturday, August fourth, and Saturday, October first.
Second.
Augur Bright, Collin, Curran, Judas, Revan.
Aye. Discuss offer to deed road to the Oglesby north of the Dry Bridge on three fifty-one from Bob Maronse. And, uh, I talked to, uh, Jim Kleiner about it, there's a, um, a little, uh, thing he put together here. It's parcel eighteen dash twenty-five dash one hundred dash two, uh, seven, has a home built in nineteen oh two on it. Will the parcel need to be subdivided to save the home, or will it be torn down? Uh, parcel one eight dash two five dash one zero zero dash zero two three is only twenty-one feet wide. Uh, would not be wide enough for a street, uh, would work, uh, would work if the home on the other lot is torn down. The property will need to be surveyed, the county GPS maps indicate that part of the current driveway is on the adjacent lot. Uh, grade down to Illinois seventy-one slash three fifty-one is steep, and the intersection slight distance to the north is poor. The, uh, ROW for Illinois seventy-one three fifty-one is owned by the state of Illinois. The city would need a permit from IDOT to create a street out of a driveway. The exiting grades do not meet IDOT policy for a street approach, approaching the state highway. The existing drive is aggregate, typically a developer handing, handing over this property for use. A street would provide a paved street meeting city of Oglesby ordinances. Jones Avenue already provides public access for the area, so a second access is not needed for access. It would shorten response time for emergency vehicles, but it does, uh, have to be a city street for emergency vehicles, uh, to use the driveway.
I don't, well, how long ago was this subdivision developed? Cause that's when you think that we, the city would've decided all this kinda stuff, so that's, that's why I'm asking why it's now.
That's been there for, probably that drive has been there for fifty years?
Well, but they subdivided the lots though.
Well, that's further on in.
Oh, okay, I got you now.
It is weird, it's, it's like the only area I know in the city that, that's city homes and city residents, but you actually have to go through a different city to get access to it, technically, unless you're gonna use the private drive, which is very strange. I mean, I'm all for it though, but the problem is, I'm curious if it doesn't meet the requirements for a city street, what, what are we gonna have to do to do that? I mean, there's a big difference between, uh, we, we did something recently for that private drive that we've now are gonna make into an actual alleyway that the city's gonna own. But that was a significantly lower cost for, for just having to pave that. That'd be my only concern.
I, I see lots of legal complications, and I see lots of expense involved in improving this to a paved street, I think you oughta consider it carefully.
And somebody else owns the house, right?
I'm.
Who owns the house?
I don't know who owns any of these houses.
That we're gonna tear down or not tear down? Cause I think just doing the road itself, I can only imagine what that would cost without tearing down another house and.
And to service how many parcels?
Yeah.
Are we talking about two houses, or what?
No, it's.
Put in a whole road?
About six or eight houses, I don't know what you did.
I think there's a multi-dwelling, multi-built, multi-unit dwelling in there too, like a rental, I think there's like four houses in a, in a rental unit, I think. I don't know how many it is though, I can't.
All serviced by this gravel road now?
There's, there's an, no, there's an access road in from Jonesville down there, but then there's, the private drive is this steep gravel road, that's why they're probably talking about, it's very steep, actually. I walked it three years ago and it's pretty sketchy, so.
But they've been, they've been going through Jonesville for fifty years, so.
I, I would.
I don't know if you're gonna look at that.
I mean, if it was, if it was literally that, all we had to do is just pave it to act like we did for the, the alley, I'd be for it, with all these other requirements, I would say he'd have to make it. If you, if you were to do something that, whatever he did there to make it to where all we had to do was pave it, then I'd be more interested in it, because, yeah, you're right, I have no idea how much this would cost. If you gotta regrade it completely to, to make it, and then wide enough to make a city street, we're talking about more than paving.
Yeah, most city streets, Jim can tell you, are probably sixty feet wide.
If you can get by fifty, the front lot is pretty wide, but the backside, there are more parcels, it's only twenty more feet. So, if you leave the house, you won't have enough.
Enough worth to even get it through.
I, I, my recommendation would be if he was gonna do something to the lots to where it made it, to where all, the only thing we had to do was take ownership and pave it, I'd, I'd be very interested in it then, but. But I, cause un- unless he's gonna pay for an estimate to find out how much it would cost it, cause right offhand, I would look at it, I'm thinking it's gonna be exorbitant amount.
So, this is a steep, like, hill driveway thingy to the right of, so it's the driveway, there's just like one house, then, right, going straight up?
Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty steep. I think it's next to your parents' house, isn't it? Is it near there?
It is down the hill.
Down the hill. Yeah.
Consider it.
Consider it, I mean, if he wants to do the estimate and all that stuff for how much it would cost, I don't know how much we should do, but right now, I'm thinking it'd be a lot.
I think so.
Is it consensus that, uh, we're not interested under what we know about it? Is that fair?
I think that's a fair statement at this time.
Okay, we'll move on. Discuss and review ordinance concerning gaming license and liquor license. And I've gone through this, and we already sent the letters out, that it's twenty-five dollars per video gaming terminal, and we're gonna live with that this year. Uh, we are looking to increase it, uh, over the next three years to two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, one hundred, seventy-five, and fifty. Uh, in reviewing this, I come to find out that the people that, um, lease the terminals to the businesses, am I saying that correctly? In most cases, they're paying for fifty cents of the, uh, uh, the terminal license, if not a hundred percent. Um, and I also took a look at what the revenue income has been for each established, spent for the first three months. Uh, it's great, I want you to keep on making that money. Uh, I do think we have to go back, there's some questions that, that I have. And it's my understanding that in order to have a gaming license, you have to have a liquor license. So, right now, if I'm not mistake, mistaken, there is one license that's open. What do we do when if we have somebody that comes in and wants to start a business? My question, does the council, uh, at any time have the authority to raise the number?
They do.
Why do we have that limit, and I see it on the H, it says licensed numbers, maximum combined number of class A and class B retail liquor license cities should be limited to twenty.
Are you on the, what, are you on the gaming?
Page nineteen.
You're on the other ordinance.
What are the ordinance?
You're under the liquor ordinance.
Probably liquor ordinance, Jason.
Oh, we have, sorry, it's all on the same item here, my bad. Okay.
And what we have to do is go back and, and look at this. Some towns require that, uh, you have to have, uh, additional income besides gaming, uh, twenty or thirty percent. I don't know what's right, but it's something this council needs to sit and discuss, and, uh, and to be fair, as I wanna protect the people that got licenses. Nobody opens a business to lose money.
What does it say the maximum number of, uh, uh, gaming license at, does it say that somewhere here?
Well, again, you can't have a gaming license if you don't have a liquor license.
I, I don't think, I mean, I haven't read the ordinance, Jason, that Amy put in our packet, but I doubt that there is a maximum number of gaming ordinances. I think it's controlled by the maximum number of liquor.
A liquor license.
Okay, cause that's on page nineteen.
So, we have up to twenty class A and class B combined?
Combined, yeah.
Do we, do we need class A and class B and E?
Personally, I think you do, um, you know, I, I think there's a distinction between those different classes of licenses. You know, one for who's, who's serving, somebody who's carrying liquor off premises and not serving on the premises, that's the distinction between those two types of licenses. You do group them together, and so you can have twenty, you know, of either one, and then Cs I think are for not-for-profits, the Alks, Legion, things like that.
Right, the Cs are, Cs are not.
And these are, these are essentially strictly gaming parlor licenses. These are essentially strictly gaming parlor licenses.
Right. So th- there's a note on my thing here that's an asterisk. It says up to six gaming machines. I assume.
That's controlled by state statute.
So the machines are, are limited by the number of liquor licenses essentially. Each, each establishment is allowed six and that's it?
Unless you're a truck stop.
Oh, yeah.
So that fall in a, does that fall in a whole different category here then or something? I don't, I don't see it in, in ordinance here.
No, it's the same one, but it's controlled by state statute, Jason. So it limits how many can be in certain types of businesses.
Okay.
So bars, gaming parlors, limited. I think some of them are even ten, somewhere in between.
So one of the concerns I heard was that I guess this new business that might be coming in, we're at our max capacity of gaming machines, but in reality, it's at the max capacity of liquor licenses.
Correct.
And we can control that amount?
Yes.
What would be the reason we wanna limit that?
The number of liquor licenses?
Yeah.
Well, it's, I think it'd hold over from prohibition, Jason, where, where you just didn't wanna throw the door open completely, you know? You control the number of liquor establishments in your town.
I get that, but I mean, I, you never wanna be up against the wall if all of a sudden a business wants to come in and say, hey, I'd like to.
You can, you can change it in two weeks, Jason. It's not, not a big deal. You know, you have a grocery store that wants to come in and sell a ton of alcohol, you could add another license real quickly.
And even, even a gaming.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we're only one away from our max capacity, I, we should probably bump it up a couple at least.
More gaming over.
Yeah, how many class Bs do you have? Are those, those included also?
Do you know Amy off the top of your head? I, I really don't. I don't know of any, any.
Well, gas stations would be.
We have one open. I did look at that a couple of weeks ago.
For class A and B?
Right.
But what, do we regulate the, the class Cs or Ds or anything like that?
It, it says here, it's, it says that.
They're wide open.
Go there wide open, okay.
It says on nineteen that only it's a combination between As and Bs can't be twenty. It looks like there's.
Three Ds?
Well, hold on, I, hold, ma'am, ma'am.
Ma'am?
We, we got it here. Um, it says H, number two, the number of C licenses shall be unlimited, but then it does say, number three, the number of class D licenses within the city should be limited to three. So what is a D?
D is the gaming parlors.
D is forty percent or, or less than forty percent of total sales should be eligible for a class D license with alcohol. It's gotta be, you have to sell, less than forty percent of your profit comes from, um, alcoholic beverages.
Do we hit, so is that like a?
That'd be like a gaming parlor only, like probably when you.
What about like Cindy's?
No.
No, they're.
Well, they make a lot more than forty percent, I would say, on other things than gaming.
And the, it says less than forty percent.
Like, they make less than forty percent.
So I'm sure they make forty percent, less than forty percent of their sales is probably from alcohol. That's what I'm saying because they're, they're not like that.
Cindy's, does they have, does Cindy's have a C license or, or D license, Amy, do you know? Or do they have a B? I would think she might have an A, but I don't know.
The majority of them fall into A and B.
Yeah.
There's only, there's only three.
Class D licenses authorized.
Right.
And only two issued? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah.
So what's an example of one?
Who, yeah, who's, who's issued a class D in town?
Isn't there one down here next to the Chinese place? No?
No, that used to be. It's out of business. You know, and the fees for class A is four hundred and then a, a fee for a class D is five hundred.
Okay.
That's the only difference.
Okay, yeah.
And the only other change that we would have to make in here is that, um, I just added as, you gotta add Seneca Square to the parks. You got all the other parks listed except Seneca Square.
So I, I heard, we were talking about this a while ago and, and I was a little confused about that. I see under here something called the class S E. Special event license shall be granted by the mayor subject to the following requirements, and it's pretty wide open. So, and it doesn't take council action. It looks like anytime somebody wanted to have a special event at like Seneca Square, because we're not held to the, we didn't get the grant.
Seneca Square is listed.
So why would a special event class not work for that? Privilege granted by such permit shall be sell beer and wine by drink in original open containers for consumption on the specific specially designated permit premise only. And it goes over a whole bunch of things, no person under twenty-one.
If you, if you go to, if you go to, on page three, city parks mean courtyard, Oak, Lehigh, Memorial, McFederin, Dickinson Fields. So we would have to have.
So we just need to add Seneca Square as an official park to it? Is all we need to do?
Yeah, I would think.
That's, I would think so too.
I mean, that's kinda the goal.
And we need to take a look at some of these, um, uh, a fine up to at seven fifty for each violation. Uh, I'd recommend we, uh, kick that up to a thousand. But not more than ten, yeah. Uh, and to suspend any license for not, um, more than in its thirty days, I'd raise it. You know, if we don't have any problems, then we're okay. And nobody wants problems.
You, you're requ-, you're, you wanting to add the amount of time that you can suspend a license for?
From thirty to ninety, you said, Dom?
I said sixty.
Thirty to sixty.
Is there an issue that we've had with that? To me, that would make sense if we had like repeat offenders that.
Well, that's, that's what I was looking. If you have repeated events.
Do we have any in the city?
No, they've been pretty good.
Why do we wanna raise it so we can? I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm not trying to be a jerk. I'm just asking.
Okay. They can discuss it.
Is there K S Alex and Legion?
They're on a different license. They're a C. They're nonprofit. Yes.
But they count for the forty?
No, no.
I believe those doesn't get passes so far.
Yeah, the Elks pays more because they, they've got, uh,
They're, they're a class, class A.
So what are we looking to change? We're looking to add Seneca Square as one of the authorized parks. We're looking to increase the number of gaming, or, uh, establishments by some amount.
We need to put something in there that we can increase it. Don't you think that, or do we just?
You don't have to. You can increase them anytime you want to.
Well, then we don't need to, then we don't need to do that.
Or you wanna increase them as the need arises, you can.
I'd like to go to at least twenty-five.
Yeah, I just, I'd never wanna be up against the wall. Um, I mean, I, obviously you don't wanna say, we, I mean, even if we put it as a hundred, that doesn't mean a hundred bars show up tomorrow. I mean, we still get some control over that, I think.
You can deny them for a reason.
Yeah, as long as we're never up against the wall, uh, if somebody wanting to expand or build something, that's, that's my only concern really.
Well, I'm sure we can have some more discussion on it.
Okay.
Next one is yours. Discuss load shedding.
So I worked on this over the weekend. Um, everybody in front of them has two drafts, and the reason it says draft is because if it says draft, it's not foible yet. So, um, the first one is our actual procedures that, uh, my electric, uh, foreman put together of what we would do. I guess let me back up, um, since we're talking about this publicly. Does everybody understand kinda what's going on? I, I think there's been a few emails that went out that discussed the load shedding problem. Uh, I know the mayor's been talking about it for quite some time, talking about the concern about the state of Illinois not able to carry the load. The I M E A has reached out to us and said basically they're concerned that in the future, there could be a potential to where there's not enough available power to carry the load. Now.
Actually, Jason, I think there is enough available power from the I M E A, but there's not enough available transmission to get it here.
That's the problem.
Correct. Okay.
Just to correct you on that.
So, correct. And so one of the things we put out, the, the good news is, and I, and I use this term because that's what they, it, it, that we're well insulated from some of the cost increases. Grant, that's not all, that's not all the transmission, just all that stuff, but.
And you're well insulated because they have so many, um, base load plants.
Correct. So we're well insulated compared to non-I M E A things, but that doesn't mean just because we're insulated from cost.
Absolutely.
That availability of the power could be there. The closest thing we've ever had to an issue so far in the city in regards to that was last year. This was right when we had the fire. For most residents that don't know, we had that fire that happened and we had to split the city on, on two circuits, uh, on the north and east circuit. Uh, and when we did that, it was also the hottest day of the year and we were about burning up our lines. So we, and I didn't wanna have to go out and tell people we're gonna shut residents off because everybody was already upset because of the problem that we had. So we were able, it was, it was so minimal that we were able to shut down every city biz, building, every municipal, municipal building, everything. And the one, uh, business wire mesh, I think I thanked them publicly, we did shut them down. They're the ones that caused the flickering light issue and stuff from, from years past. That's the closest thing we've ever had to having an incident where we would have to shut power down intentionally. What this is, is in the event that something might not be available, be a distribution or transmission, um, they could come to us and say, hey, we're gonna need you to shed tw- ten percent load, twenty percent load, thirty percent load. This really is a good thing because if you wouldn't be part of the I M E A or a co-op like this, you would just be, you would just be dropped. And that's probably what, if this does happen in the future, that's what's gonna happen to places that are outside the city limits of Oglesby. The good news is we have some control over that. The bad news is, as elected people making decisions over who gets power and who doesn't get power, obviously it's not fun. So, the, the long letter here, it's three, three pages, that is the draft that I came up with of what I think we should be sending out to the businesses and schools. It explains a little bit what the problem is. It explains the, the recommendations we have, and it even at the very end has the press releases, the links to the press release from MISO and Ameren that affects this. Um, so basically there's, there's four types of plans. There, there is, if we get more, twenty-four hours notice or more, that there's gonna be an issue. And then the options of if school's in session or not. And as you can see, I went off the recommendations of who has the, the worst load factor or power factor to recommend of how we can minimize that. So we have options that go all the way from ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty percent. Um, and then on the very last page, I put in something about a contingency plan, and this is the first we've ever talked about it. The city, I believe in the last administration, put together something called a warming center. That's where the health and safety commissioner has the, uh, health and safety commissioner, or the mayor has the ability to open up city hall in the middle of the night to make it a warming center if there's such a cold event that people are without power, without heat or something like that. What I'm recommending is that we do the exact opposite with, comes to a cooling center, cause a lot of these problems will more likely happen if it's in the middle of the summer. So if there's an event to where we have to shed more than sixty percent load, which means we're gonna have to affect residents and we'd have to affect the stove group and all those kinds of things, I recommend that we could open up city hall here and/or if we had to drop a hundred percent of load, we could use the fire station because that is on generator power. That is, I know that's a lo- lot of words for everything I just said. Um, and this might be the first time you, to see the draft again. This is just the draft. I'm curious, anybody have any questions, concerns, thoughts, anything?
And so the whole fire station's air conditioner, right? I, I'm asking a dumb question cause I don't know.
Well, I don't know about, I don't know about the bays or anything like that, but what I'm talking. Yeah, what I'm talking about is if you look at the, if you go there, like where people vote, there, normally the only times people are there is like when there's voting, but.
I've never been in there, so.
Oh, oh, yeah, oh, that's probably not your voting center then. Yeah, so, so normally when the voting machines aren't there, there's tables there for like conference rooms and, and stuff like that. I shouldn't say conference room, like a, like a round table.
It's a meeting room.
Like a meeting room. So.
And it's got some separate offices.
There's some separate offices. So if we needed to, we could run air conditioning out of there. If people had oxygen that they needed to be on, they could go down to that location there. And then of course, we can keep city hall open unless we had a hundred percent drop, then city hall wouldn't even do that. But that's my recommendation. And hopefully we'll never have to use this, but I got a feeling that the way the state of Illinois is going, it very well could be, I, I foresee the state of Illinois looking like what California did in the early to mid two thousands with the rolling brownouts and the blackouts. So I see that's what's happening.
Our, our problem, problem is that the transmission lines can't get it to us. It's a highway, it's clogged. You can't close base load plants and then bring in that, uh, generation from neighboring states like Missouri, Kentucky, Indiana, uh, Wisconsin. What that does is, is overload the highway. And it gets to be, uh, a nightmare. Uh, as far as the city of Oglesby, the I M E A, we're well positioned to keep our rates stable and down. To give you an, an example how nuts this is gonna get, a year ago, we have this auction. A kilowatt went for fifteen cents a kilowatt. This year, at the auction, it went from seven dollars and fifteen cents per kilowatt. So if you were one of these businesses that was buying it on the open market, when we had an excess capacity, oh, you were making out great. But that ain't gonna happen now.
If you recall, there was people that were upset, I think when we first got in three years ago, that were trying to compare us to, uh, other places because, hey, look, ours is, is lower at this location. Well, that's because there's excess capacity available via the open market.
Don't have that now.
That is, those days are, are, at least for the foreseeable future, those days are gone. So.
So I'm just trying to read the plan A. So going down, so the business to ten percent, those two, like in plan A would be the ten percent.
For, for example.
So then the next four would be the twenty percent.
Correct.
So I understand how this works.
Correct. And these are, and these are just rough estimates, obviously depending on the day of how much heat they're using or whatever. So this is a good, so example, if they said we have to shed ten percent load. And in reality, this is just to make it more explainable, they won't tell us we have to shed ten percent. They'll say, I need you to shed four megawatts. Or, or something like that is what they'll tell us. But if ten percent load is all we needed, if there's no, if school's in session, Bootsy and Wire Mesh would be the only ones affected. If there's no school in session, the three schools and Bootsy would be the only one affected. Wire Mesh would still stay operational. So that's why the plans changed a little bit. And then of course, the other one, the bigger one that's probably a bigger concern is plan C and plan D. That is if they don't have any notice or very short notice. Like they might call us, like, like if they can tell us the day before there's gonna be a problem, great, that's what we can go. But if they tell us, hey, uh, the lines are about to burn up, you have fifteen minutes to shut twenty percent down. We're not gonna have time to go to those individual businesses and pull plugs. So that's why plan C and plan D are quite a bit shorter lists. That's why it says, you know, you know, the entire substation, uh, you know, circuit eight, circuit nine, you know, just, they're gonna pull those completely. That's the only way we could be able to shut a portion of it down within like fifteen minutes if something like that were to happen. Any thoughts on that? I mean, this is not gonna be popular. You, if we send this letter out to the businesses, you know, some of them will be mad, but I'm trying to make sure they understand that this is actually a good thing. Because if you lived outside the corporate limits of, of the city of Oglesby and you were on somebody else's power, you're not even gonna get the option. You're just gonna be in the dark.
Well, that's why, um, and hopefully by this fall, we'll start on our solar project behind the fire station.
So we're not, we're not taking action right now, right?
No.
Well, I.
I kinda wanna review that a little bit more detail.
Please, no, please, absolutely review it. Let me know what you think. You know, I, I would like to get it out before the summer. Uh, I think that's probably the earliest that we'd actually ever really run into an event, but I knew it is ninety-two degrees this week.
They're trying to get ahead of the curve instead of behind it.
I don't think the I M E A gave us a deadline when they wanted it. They talked to us about this about six months ago, so we've been kinda putting it together. But before it gets really hot would be a good idea to have it activated.
Well, we're trying to.
So yeah, please take a look at it, tell me what you think, and we'll, uh, if we need to modify it some more, we'll go from there.
Okay. Under old business, uh, got hit last week and I didn't realize it from the L G B T Q. Uh, I didn't know we had so many old ordinances out there that we needed to go back and address, and we will. And as soon as we get that out and done, and our good attorney will tell us what we need to get out and what, uh, what we can do, we'll get it done.
I do have.
Public comment.
I do have that one other item I talked to you about. Last week after our meeting, I had one of the, a member from, uh, the last, um, city council that was upset with me about some of the words I said, so I wanted to try to make some clarification. There was a gentleman that, from the audience that said something about, um, about the, the money we spent, twenty-five thousand to, to figure out what we're doing and what we're doing for, for Seneca Square, what we're doing for the city, for, for bringing businesses downtown. And it made a very quick reference to Seneca Square. Um, and I think he was upset that I diminished what the old council said or did or what they were trying to do, and that couldn't be farther from the truth. I appreciate what the old council did. I think they recognized that there was a problem. They spent some money on some stuff and they looked for solutions. My argument was that we, this council went a different direction and decided not to spend that amount of money. It is true, I did not mention all the other things. He was upset that I used the term splash pad. Well, it was called the splash pad in the news media. I, you know, I was minimizing it, but yes, it was for a lot of other things, have a water feature, an ice skating rink. There was a lot of great plans with it. I did not mention that there was a three hundred thousand dollars worth of donations. I did not know that. I knew that there was a four hundred thousand dollar grant. I did not mention that. Uh, and I, I knew that there was a twelve thousand dollar, um, donation for the, um, the fountain. I did not mention that either. So again, my point. So, again, my point wasn't to try to tear down, well, people made decisions in the past about Seneca Square. My point was to try to combat the idea that the city does recognize that there needs to be more events in the downtown area, and the city has done some events, uh, to work on Seneca Square at a much lower cost. Um, I think that's about all I had on the subject. So.
Thank you. Uh, public comments?
I've been watching quite a few of the meetings, and I was kind of shocked when, uh, it came up about the sewer treatment plant and the, uh, two million dollar fee that we've given to Chamblin. Was that something that was voted on at the meeting? Because that seems rather excessive. Two million, just two million? I mean, you're always, Jason, you're always talking about money, 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 but who made the okay to say, you know, was it a TM, was it time and material? It's like work on it when you get it, or what?
We've been paying, we've been paying bills on the, uh, for work on the, uh, water treatment plant for the last two years, for sure.
Well, yeah, but, I mean, was there a fee ever talked about of drawing the plants completely up and saying, here, here's what we can do for you. We'll do all the planning, and this is our fee. Or is it just, we just keep paying and paying? And my other question is, is how much will a solar, uh, panels generate at night?
If it helps us during the day, it's a step in the right direction.
Yeah, but wind turbines are going twenty-four hours a day.
Okay.
You know, just because Chamblin's got a whole thing where they were up north of Peru, and yeah, they didn't have enough room up there, or enough wind up there, drive in directions, and all you see is wind turbines. So I guess, somebody's wrong.
So, um, we, we approved the, the contract last meeting. If you haven't had a chance to look at it, you can get it at the, uh, at the clerk's office here. I'd recommend taking a look through it then, if you, if you got some specific questions about fees or the fee schedule.
Greg.
Greg, say. Two things, um, the dry bridge, I'll come back to the, well, maybe I'll do that one first. The other one will be, uh, I don't quite understand how bidding process can multiply forty-seven times to from fifteen cents to seven fifteen, uh, for a kilowatt. That's a humong, that sounds like gouging and almost, uh, in, almost insider trading kind of stuff. I don't quite get that.
Well, let me, let, let me, let me try to explain it to you. And if you close down X amount of base load fossil plants.
Well, is that a perspective, or did that happen?
It's happened. It's happened. You don't have excess capacity.
So we're gonna see a forty-seven times rate increase this summer?
No, no.
Not, not, not the IMEA, not the city of Oglesby.
Okay.
So that's supposed to.
If you were, if you were, if you were somebody that was in a, um.
Ares, for example?
Well. A third-party vendor of the excess power.
A lot of the.
Let's, let's, let's see, if you, if you take, um, say, a, a General Motors plant, and you were buying X amount, you were hedging on, on the market, what, which you would pay, looking at, at what the auctions have been, and then you were buying on the spot market. People up until about a year ago, if they were buying on the spot market, they were getting a pretty good deal. But as they continued to, to close these base load plants, uh, it just, it just shrunk the capacity. And actually, their plan, uh, if you take a look at it, uh, I don't think there's a base load plant below I eighty by twenty thirty-five.
Okay, I'm just not understanding how we are, we are escaping this, but it almost sounds like Enron and Enlay and.
Because, because we have, we have, we have looked to the future. We've laid out, we haven't, we've got X amount of capacity that comes from base load plants. We've hedged our bets in the right direction.
All right. And, and as far as the, the dry bridge situation, I know, uh, it's kind of labeled a road, but it's really an alley. Can you, can it be worded so that it stays an alley? Cause I think what they really want is for the city to run the plows through it when it, it snows. And it was mentioned that there's a incline there. We may have another alley that we agreed to plow that we'd have to keep people from skidding, uh, sliding down a, a badly, uh, removed snow pile or, uh, snow load on that alley. Cause this town's full of alleys that people use almost like roads. And I just wanted you guys to consider that maybe allow it to happen as an alley, kind of like what's happening to the curtain in front of the root beer stand, which I don't understand that one either, but.
Basically, basically curtain, uh, crossing the root beer stand, that was a private drive for the first, what, four hundred feet? Five hundred feet, whatever it is. And, uh, and he subdivided it, and he's going to deed that roadway that we've been using forever to the city.
And, and besides the part about just the width of it, the other thing that, the grade down to Illinois seventy-one through fifty-one is steep, and the intersection site distance in the north is poor. So it's too steep to go into a, a state highway. That's the other issue there. Even if you do something about the width, so there's multiple issues with it. That's why it's not just the width.
If the city owns it, we have to fix it. If it's just a private we own alley, it, it's, uh, it, it's okay.
I, I don't know the details of that. I just know that if the city were to own it, we'd have to be responsible for maintaining it. And if it doesn't meet the criteria of a city street, I'd be concerned about us paying for whatever those costs are to make it be that way.
It's something that is, if the offer was made, you bring it before the council.
Commissioner?
I have nothing to report tonight, Dom.
I have nothing, Mayor.
Nothing.
I have nothing new to report tonight.
Oh.
And I'm sure. Fun Days, fifty-fifty tickets. Uh, we need the support of the community. We're gonna have another successful near year. We need volunteers. Please call city hall if you're interested in helping make Fun Days a great family, uh, event. I want to thank JP for getting the field in great shape for the mayor's parade, and Ron Moore for throwing out the first pitch. It was only fitting that we pay tribute to Hank Moore, who was a great supporter of baseball in Oglesby. Uh, the city, uh, the city of Oglesby is looking into electric vehicle charging stations, uh, and electric vehicle programs. We need to find out what is out there, what grants are available, and what best fits the city. As I mentioned earlier, the city is reviewing, reviewing old ordinance, uh, and will delete outdated ordinance that violate anyone's right under the state and or federal laws. Uh, the design and review board and the facade board will be combined. They both do essentially the same thing, and this will eliminate a step. The city council will approve, as always, all facade grants. With nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Dom, I have one more thing. Just a announcement. The ambulance board is gonna be meeting for the first time, uh, Wednesday at five PM. It will be open to the public and be here at the city hall building.
Okay.
That's all I have.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
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 Did I say something incorrect? I, I wasn't gonna talk about the difference in the political thing, the fact that they still happen, yeah. Yeah, there was, there was different reasons for stuff like that, though. Ours might be.